All very well, we're going to get started here. Good evening all. It is the April 23 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. The four of the members of the board are here this evening. You will note the absence of our colleague, Mr. McCoy. For those that aren't aware, Mr. McCoy is the nephew of Representative Jim Misselli, and so while I'm not 100% sure why Mr. McCoy is not here, we can presume that perhaps he's spending time with family, and we certainly send out our regards and sympathies to him. If I could ask everyone, I'm sorry, we just are completing a 6 o'clock scheduled executive session for the purpose of discussing real property, as well as some executive session minutes which were approved. And if I could ask everyone present here this evening to rise and pledge allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. One last little note to make, I wanted to draw attention, draw your attention to the fact that each of the members here this evening are wearing an item of blue, as well as Beverly, and that is in recognition of April being Autism Awareness Month. As you probably have noticed by now, the Wilmington Common is lit at blue, with blue lights or blue gels throughout the month. And so, again, we are grateful to having had this brought to our attention several years ago, and continue that tradition of recognizing that every April. Thank you. It's an awkward, not awkward, but it's an uncomfortable moment, certainly, where this meeting is being held just days after we lost, frankly, a local legend. I won't belabor the point, there's been ample amount of press, but we are all painfully aware of the passing of Representative James Misselli this past Saturday. And so, while events over the course of the next several days will pay ample tribute to him at his wake and at his funeral, I thought it was completely appropriate for us this evening to just reflect on the contributions that he's made to the town of Wilmington over the course of really 50-plus years in public service. And so, I would invite everyone here, just for a brief moment to, we'll just do a moment That being said, I wanted to just give the opportunity, if any of my colleagues had the desire or had some commentary to make at this time with regards to Representative Misselli's passing, now would be the time to offer that. Yeah, Mr. Bendel?
Certainly a very sad time for our town, as we remember somebody who's done so much for our community, not only Wilmington, Tuxbury, and beyond, but certainly want to send my condolences to his family.
Thank you, Greg. Kevin Henry?
I just want to certainly acknowledge the many years of public service that Representative Misselli gave to Wilmington and Tuxbury, and also extend my condolences and best prayers and thoughts are with the family at this difficult time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lauth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, me too. I've known Mr. Misselli since I've moved into town, and he's been a great person to this community, not only Wilmington but Tuxbury and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I said earlier, it's an incredibly sad day, Saturday was, but all this week and time moving forward, this community and our communities are going to miss him dearly. He's done so much, and we really appreciate that. And my condolences to him and his family, Mr. McCoy and his family, and God bless them all. Thank you.
Mr. Lauth, did you have any comments you'd like to share this time?
Certainly, the fact that he spent so much of his life in the public realm, you know, the civic engagement speaks for itself, and I just wish his family, you know, thoughts are with them, and our condolences.
Indeed. Thank you all. I would just finalize, I guess, the comments with regards to that, is at times like this, I think there's an inclination to feel sadness, to feel sorrow. I would say that Mr. Misselli, at the age that he left us, we ought to be, at the same time we feel sad, it's an opportunity for us to celebrate a life well-lived. There was a gentleman who dedicated his life to public service, and inasmuch as we can feel sad, I think we can also feel happy for having been the recipients of his hard work for, gosh, the better part of 50-plus years. So, thank you to his family for sharing him with us for all of those years, and our hearts and condolences go out to you. Thank you all. So, we will move on with our agenda. Is the Treasury Warrants 41, 41A, 42, and 42A, do I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Kira, and seconded by Mr. Bendel. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Four and one absent. We do have two sets of minutes to approve, January 22 of 2018 and February 5 of 2018. Well, you can take them up individually if that's okay. January 22, any motion or discussion?
Motion to approve as read.
Mr. Lauth, accept motion?
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Kira. Any conversation about the January 22 minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Four and one absent. February 5, 2018, minutes of the regular Board of Selectmen meeting. I would accept a motion to approve as written.
So moved.
Motion's made by Mr. Bendel?
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Kira. Any discussion on them? Seeing none, all in favor? Four and one absent. Thank you. Our scheduled appointments, our 7 o'clock scheduled appointment that we are 10 minutes late for, so we're going to catch up, is with Lou Smaglia, our Director of Veterans Services and a former colleague on this board, with regards to an update relative to programs that Mr. Smaglia operates out of the Veterans Office, and other new and exciting announcements to be made. Mr. Smaglia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for having me today on your final meeting, graciously putting me on your agenda.
Yes, sir.
Just, yeah, I was there Saturday when Mr. Misselli went down, and I happened to be standing right next to him, and I got to tell you, every year in the Little League opening day, they have two veterans, they asked me to get them two veterans to throw out the first pitch. And this year happened to be two Wilmington police officers. Nick Noftle, who is a staff sergeant, has done three deployments, Iraq, Afghanistan, and Cuba. And Mike Johnson, who is a Marine, who's done two deployments, one in Iraq and Afghanistan. So, they were supposed to throw out the first pitch, obviously the ceremonies were canceled, but they happened to be standing right there with me, and the way they jumped into action, as well as others that were there, jumped into action, it was admirable. Even, as has been noted, a couple of people from the crowd, I think an off-duty nurse and a off-duty doctor, but it was pretty impressive to see the guys jump right into action like that. And they did not get the opportunity to throw out the first pitch, so, which is okay, but they, I just want to let that be known, that they were right there. The Veterans Office, we're busy. We, I forgot my notes in my office, but we have, right now, I think, close to 500 open VA claims that are being worked continually. My partner in my office, Mike Frotten, who's been there for almost a year now, has been a wonderful addition to the town. He's a hard-working guy, he's gotten, he's a computer guy, so we kind of fit right in with all the different programs the VA and the state has to offer. So, we've done, we're literally hundreds of claims a month we're working, doing service on. The Chapter 115 program is the state-run program that we administer benefits to, veterans and widows in town, widows of veterans. And, again, we've, since the 13 years I've been doing this, we've had approximately 150 people on or off benefits during the time, and it's been a great, it's been an asset to a lot of veterans and senior veterans and senior widows that are on fixed income, and we're able to help them out a little bit with that. And the town receives 75% reimbursement from the state for every dollar we spend for the Chapter 115 benefits. Obviously, Memorial Day is coming up, and we have a wonderful guest speaker this year. His name is Andrew Bejio. He was the Veteran Service Officer in Saugus for a couple of years, I believe. He's a young Marine that is a real hard charger, and he started the Boston Wounded Vet Run, which is a motorcycle run where they have over 5,000 motorcycles, and all the money goes directly to injured veterans. And if you go on the website, bostonwoundedvetrun.com or something, I forgot my notes in my office, in case I forgot to tell you. But the Boston Wounded Vet Run is a phenomenal thing that Andrew started, and now there's, I think, 12 states that have actually jumped on board, and he's flown to those states and helped them out. He's now an MBTA police officer. Andrew's a great kid, and we're going to be honored to hear him speak on Memorial Day.
Lou, if I'm going to interrupt you there, if you don't mind, just, so folks, you know, we know about the parade, right?
Yeah.
And there might be a lot of folks that go and participate in the parade, which is awesome, but the time that you're talking about is after the parade?
At 11 o'clock at the cemetery, right in front in the Veterans Lot.
Very well.
Yeah, I'm glad you stopped me there, because that whole weekend, we will be getting our flyer out shortly, the program. It all starts Saturday morning at 8 o'clock at the cemetery. And part of my job, part of my charge as the Graves' Officer, is to decorate every veteran's grave throughout the whole cemetery. And we have been able to do that for decades with the help of many people. And I'd like to invite children to come down. We have many Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and they come down with their families. I love to see the kids walking around the cemetery decorating the graves with a flag and a geranium, and it's, I've seen some, I've seen some kids here that have been here since they were little, and it's really nice. And then, we go around and we decorate all the monuments around town, and that, family members have actually come out and met us at the monument. It's all in the program where we start and where we end up. And then, Sunday morning, we have a mass, and then we do a short ceremony at the Police and Fire Department, St. Thomas, and then we're on the Common, I believe, for 1, 1 o'clock or 1:30, I forget. And I actually read all the squares that are around town, why they're dedicated to each individual. And then, of course, the parade on Monday, that's step off at 10 o'clock promptly, and we all know it goes down Main Street, down Church Street, and ends up at the Common, where a lot of the participants, the children, get free hot dogs. And the rest, the honor guards march directly to the cemetery, and we do our thing right at 11 o'clock.
And of course, accompanied by the best band in the land, the Wilmington Wildcats.
Absolutely, words out of my mouth, they're there every year, and it's a wonderful tradition that we have here in Wilmington. And again, to see the children involved is very nice. So, that's our whole weekend. We will be getting it out to the crier and the program with all the things we do the whole weekend. So, come get, come out, get involved. It's really encouraging to see how many people attend the parade and the ceremonies, and the decorating the graves Saturday morning, 8 o'clock, the Saturday before Memorial Day.
Excellent.
And then?
And then?
As a matter of fact, I just got the finalized contract. We will be, in 2008, September of 2008, as many of you know, Wilmington hosted the Vietnam Moving Wall. It was an amazing, powerful week, and Wilmington did itself proud. The couple that travels with the wall, and has been for years, remembered the display that we put on in Wilmington Common. The ceremonies, the flyovers, the somber, everything was just wonderful. Plus, the wall looks like it was made for the Common, or the Common was made for the wall, it just fit perfectly. So, Wilmington will be hosting it again 10 years later, July 26, the morning of, is when the wall will be escorted into town and then erected, and that'll be, it'll be there four nights to the 30th, and then we'll have a ceremony every night. Every night at 7 o'clock, we'll have a ceremony, and hopefully to include a flyover again. The Saturday night is going to be public safety. We haven't finalized all the different ceremonies yet, but the Saturday night is going to be the Public Safety Night, which is Police and Fire, and what we did 10 years ago was incredible. We had over 22 honor guards lined up in front of the wall. So, that was, that was very impressive, and with the Fire Chief and Police Chief, we've already started working on that. And you're going to cry, aren't you?
No.
Yeah. But-
I'll cry when the wall is here.
That's right, that's right. It was an extremely powerful week. We'll be looking for volunteers. Of course, we'll get the word out when it gets closer, but we have to have somebody walking the wall. If people are looking for a name, we have books that they'll look into and see what panel are on the wall. It's an extremely powerful week, and Wilmington did itself proud 10 years ago, and I'm sure we'll do it again.
It's great. I'm very grateful to you, Lou, for grabbing that ball and running with it again this year. I'm so excited for the wall to come. It was, it has been, in my life, almost 20 years now in Wilmington, that has been one of the big highlights of my, of my living in this community. And frankly, I'd be completely honest with you, as I walk out the door, I will tell you that my, working closely with you and with so many other wonderful people on that project, really is what set the hook in me and the idea of public service in this community. And it wasn't long after that I took on the charge of running for this office. So, really, thank you for bringing that to, to the community and to so many folks. And I hope that, you know, there will be lots of opportunity, as you just said, for, to communicate the dates and what the events are between now and the end of July. But July, summer, it can be a busy time, it's vacation time, but I'm asking folks, please, maybe look at that, that July 26 through the 30th, and maybe block that out. Don't, don't be traveling that, that week. Maybe plan to spend those few days in Wilmington, because it'll be worth it, and you will, you will be grateful to Lou and to all the folks that work on this project for it having been here. So, we're looking forward to a great attendance at that.
And on that note, Mr. Chair, you were on the committee 10 years ago, and you're on the committee again, and just to let everyone know, we have reached out to the high school, the graphic arts, and they're going to be designing a tee-shirt, as they did 10 years ago. So, we will be selling tee-shirts again, and the kids, I'm sure, are going to come up with an amazing, amazing design, and we'll get together and pick it out, and we're going to do some shirts. We've been fortunate, where it cost probably around $7,000 total to get the wall here. We've already sent them a check for $2,500. People are, again, are just so generous, how can I help and what can I do? So, we're going to be, we're going to be all right, it's going to be a lot of fun.
Indeed.
And it's going to be a powerful week, just like it was before.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else to report specifically before I open up to my colleagues?
Had my notes, I probably would have something.
They'll have to have you back. Very well, Lou, thank you again. Gentlemen, I want to open up to comments, questions, concerns, criticisms, lots of criticisms. Anyone?
Lou, as always, thank you. Top-notch, everything that you do, from start to finish, and cannot impress upon how good and generous you are in what you do for this community, the veterans, and the service that you've given to the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bendel?
Certainly want to echo those sentiments, but Lou, you're the best, I appreciate what you do, and I think it doesn't go unnoticed by anybody, certainly anybody who drives down 129 in the evening sees that that light is still on in your office, and you're not in there playing cards, I know you're working, so I appreciate that, and certainly, like Mr. Kira said, anytime you do something, it's top-notch. So, I don't think I've ever come across somebody who advocates better for veterans, and so I know they appreciate it, and we appreciate what you do. So, we look forward to enjoying these wonderful events that are coming up and future events. And again, thank you for all you do, and to Mike as well.
Yep.
Because from what we hear, he's doing an excellent job.
Phenomenal.
Great.
Thank you.
Lou, you know how the Lauth family feels about what you do, you've done a lot for our family, friends, and relatives, and it's one of the reasons why. I am an advocate for the veterans, as you know, and the Lauth family will be there to support you guys in every event. But I have one word, you're simply the best.
Thank you.
You really are. You mean a lot to the Lauth family, but everyone in this community, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind words, I really do, but I'm blessed. I mean, our, Mike and I working in there, our job description is we help veterans and their families. That's it. And we're fortunate to have the backing of this board, and Jeff, and Dee, and Police and Fire, and we've been fortunate to be able to build the relationships in the 13-plus years I've been here, and it's, it's good stuff.
And veterans run, run from 18 years old to 98 years old, right?
Yeah, that's, that's-
No age restrictions on that, right?
Guys that served in World War II and kids that have just gotten homes. As a matter of fact, this week, we had a 23-year-old come in, he just got off active duty, and then I, my 93-year-old World War II vet that I go visit every Sunday. So, it's good stuff, it's pretty impressive.
Well, we're grateful for the work you do there. I think it's also worth noting-
Lots of help.
Yeah, of course, of course.
Yeah.
But, you know, you're doing more than plugging people into financial programs, or there are folks that, there are veterans that are struggling sometimes, and I think outside of the normal scope of what a Veterans Services Officer would do, you go above and beyond the call of duty, and you're helping people who are struggling with whatever their challenges are in life. So, I feel like it's worthwhile to make sure that the people of the town of Wilmington recognize that far beyond pushing paper around, you're actually saving people's lives in many cases, and we're very grateful to you for that.
Okay, I appreciate that too, but we also have a group every other Thursday night. We did it for years, and we kind of took a year off, but we're doing it again. Every other Thursday night, this Thursday being one of them, we have a group. So, if a young vet out there or an older vet wants to stop in, come on by, 6 o'clock, we have pizza, or calzone, or Chinese food or something, and that's how I get them in. And we help, we help each other out, and it's, it's good stuff. We've been able to connect a lot of the older veterans with the younger veterans, and there's been some good bonds and help for each other.
Lou, can I ask, where is that?
Right at my office.
At your office?
Yeah, yeah. Right there, yeah. Yeah, anybody, any vet that just wants to go and talk and everything, that's, that's where to go. Hi, Judy.
Anything else, Lou?
I think that's it.
So, in the words of a mentor to me, you're done, Mr. Smaglia.
Well, now that I have the mic, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I don't know if I'm going to be able to stay the whole meeting, but I just want to say thank you for three terms on this board, and a couple words come to mind, honorable, you know, family, you've, yeah, and they're here. I've known you for over 15 years now, and you've done nothing but good for this, for this board, for this community, through your volunteerism and different things, whether it's the church, or the Knights of Columbus, or here, or all, the Moving Wall, all the things you've done. The words that be thrown around are, you know, backroom deals, lobbyists, and all that, that's, no such thing of anybody on this board, any guy here. I mean, I served on that boat for nine years, and there was no kickbacks, if there was, I missed them, they never offered me anything, but, yeah, so, you know, nothing but stand-up guy.
Thanks, sir.
And I appreciate all your service, and thank you.
That's kind of you to say. You're a good friend, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you closely. Thanks, Lou.
Oh, you're welcome.
He's got you, no. Yeah, I know. Speed dial. So, our 7:15 scheduled appointment, Lou, you went long.
Yeah.
It's a discussion among this board with regards to the assignments of motions for the annual town meeting, and for this, I will hand the ball over to Jeff.
Thank you. So, as we do at this time every year in the lead-up to the annual town meeting, a listing of the various articles to be presented, and a proposed schedule of members of the board, Finance Committee, and School Committee to present. So, if you'd like, I can just go through them individually here. Starting off, the list is just a dispensing of reading of the warrant. Mr. McCoy would be proposed for that. Article, Article 2 is the committee reports, there'll be two this year, one being the Facilities Committee, and the other being a status on the Inhabitant Bylaws Committee. Selectman Kira, unpaid bills of previous years. Selectman Lauth. Article 4, Authorization of the Treasurer to Borrow Funds would be directed to the new member of the board. Article 5, there'll be a series of articles, as you know, this is the omnibus budget, essentially the various accounts, and Theresa Maganelli, Chair of the Finance Committee, will present those articles. Article 6A begins the capital expenditure articles, the first being the purchase of police cruisers. It's proposed that Selectman Bendel take that one. 6B is capital expenditures related to a DPW dump truck, Plow &amp; Sanders, 162,000. Selectman McCoy, again, Article 6C, another dump truck valued at 86,500. Selectman Kira. Then, 6D, replacement of a handicapped accessible student transport van valued at 55,000. Selectman Lauth. Article 7, replacement of computer workstations, 55,000 would be assigned to the new member of the board. Article 8, again, more IT, public safety, universal power supply unit valued at 20,000. Selectman Bendel. Article 9 is the replacement of our enterprise software valued at 941,800. Selectman McCoy. Replacement of LED lighting fixtures in both the Woburn Street and Shawshin Schools, valued at $370,000 in total between two schools. Selectman Kira. Article 11, replacement of light fixtures at the Town Hall Football Field, or the Robert Palmer Field, valued at 75,000. Selectman Lauth. Article 12 was the study for the North Wilmington Fire Substation, which is proposed to be withdrawn. Article 13, construction of pickleball courts, total value of that is $80,000. Selectman Bendel. 14 is reconstruction of the rear main parking lot at the North and intermediate school, valued at 137,000. That would be assigned to Selectman McCoy. Article 15, phased expansion of the Wildwood Cemetery, valued at $20,000. Selectman Kira. Article 16, sidewalk construction, 1,750 linear feet on Lawrence Street, valued at $110,000. Selectman Lauth. Article 17, professional engineering services and software licensing for roadway management pavement update, and that one is valued at 35,000, assigned to the new member of the board. Article 18, upgrade to traffic signals, this is at Middlesex Ave and Federal Street, valued at $210,000, assigned to Selectman Bendel. Article 19, installation of traffic signal detection at Burlington Avenue, Chestnut Street, Deming Way, Marion Street, valued at 21,000, assigned to Selectman McCoy. Article 20, design and construction of a grinder system assembly at Pilcher Drive, this is a sewer pump station, valued at $150,000, assigned to Selectman Kira. Article 21, replacement of seven desktop computers and 86 laptops at the Wilmington Middle School, valued 161,000, assigned to the School Committee. Article 22, replacement of projectors and interactive whiteboards, elementary schools, valued at $135,000, again, assigned to the School Committee. Article 23, phased voice-over IP phone system, valued at $50,000 for the Wilmington Public Schools, again, the School Committee will address that one. Article 24, new data center for the Wilmington Public Schools, $50,000, again, the School Committee. Article 25, design and construction of a water main over Route 93, valued at $850,000. Selectman Lauth. Replacement of the Nassau Ave water tank, valued at $2,500,000, would be assigned to the new Selectman. Article 27, Authorization of premiums for borrowing to be applied to projects, this would be assigned to Selectman Bendel. Article 28, the deposit of funds in the other post-employment liability trust fund in the amount of $1 million. Selectman McCoy. Article 29, deposit into the Capital Stabilization Fund of $4 million, assigned to Selectman Kira. Article 30, deposit of money into the Employee Retirement Benefit Stabilization Fund in the amount of 500,000. Selectman Lauth. Article 31, payment to the Middlesex Retirement System, this is an advance payment in the amount of $1 million, would be assigned to the new Selectman. Article 32 is a transfer of funds from various accounts. This is the typical account where we square up with accounts that we need additional funds for, this would be directed to Selectman Bendel. Article 33- This would be directed to Selectmen Bendel. Article Thirty Three, funding the Fourth of July celebration in the amount of $50,000. Selectmen McCoy. Article Thirty Four, funds for Memorial and Veterans Day observances in the amount of $6,000. Selectmen Kira. Article Thirty Five, Veterans of Foreign Wars and American Legion lease of quarters. Both groups would receive $750 for a total of $1,500. Selectmen Loud. Article Thirty Six, continuation of the revolving fund authorizations for compost bins and subsurface sewage disposal upgrades. Composting bins in the amount of $4,500. The disposal systems in the amount of $200,000 would be assigned to the new member of the board. Article Thirty Seven is the Public Rink Enterprise account. Again, the authorization, this is not a funding item, but the authorization is $526,000. This would be for Selectmen Bendel. Article Thirty Eight would be the naming of the Wilmington High School Auditorium after the late Joanne M. Benton. Would be the School Committee. Article Thirty Nine, authorization to award bus transportation contracts in excess of three years. This would be a School Committee motion. Article Forty is authorization of a tax increment financing agreement between the town in analog devices. Selectmen McCoy. The next articles, Article Forty One is a zoning article, Section 3.1 and Table 1, General Principal Use Provisions, Planning Board. Article Forty Two is again an amendment to zoning bylaws, Sections 6.6, 10, 18, Principal Activity, Planning Board. Article Forty Three, amending the zoning bylaws, Section 3.8, 14, Pet Care Facilities, Planning Board. Article Forty Four, amending the zoning bylaws, Section 6.3, Signs and Advertising Devices, Planning Board. Amending the zoning bylaws, Sections 6.9, 3, and Section 3.5, 10, Cosmetic Tattooing, Planning Board. And then finally, Article Forty Six, amending the zoning bylaws to rezone 84 Main Street. Again, a Planning Board motion.
Very well, thank you. Any questions or concerns about anything that...
There's your name on there, Mike.
I paid my dues. Very well, so, that's great, thank you. So, we can jump right into communications, then.
Not quite. There's another agenda item over there. At 7:30, we have the recognition of our Chairman, Mike Shampoo.
Sure, yeah, so, I don't know, that's awkward for me to operate that agenda item. So, I'll hand the ball to Jeff, or whoever wants to take that one, take that one on.
Well, it... it amazes me, you've been here for twenty years, and fifteen out of those twenty years, talking about jumping right into the community with both feet, and just outstanding what you've done. I've had the pleasure of serving under two chairmen. I've been here for two years, one Judy O'Connell, who I see in the audience out there, and Mike Shampoo, and two of the best that I've learned from, and I thank them both, but I thank you, Michael, for your dedication and devotion to this position that you've had for nine years. Every decision that you've made has been in the best interest of this community and on its residents. You know, he does, he goes over and above what any of us do. I'm not trying to put a smack on us, fellas, but he attends all the MMA conferences, and he goes to the breakfast, probably goes to breakfast to eat, but... And he, you know, he represents the Board of Selectmen in Wilmington admirably. You just, you're always out there, you're always positive, you're always giving back, and promoting and representing Wilmington. And I want to thank you for your public service, and certainly, Wilmington is a much better place because of what you've done, the decisions that you've made over the years, and we want to thank you for everything that you've done for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Kira. I'm humbled by those very, very generous words. Thank you, sir. I don't know, anybody else? You keep saying nice things about me.
Mike, I'm the newest selectman. I've been here just a year now, and what I've learned from you, the way you've conducted our meetings, not only in here, but outside of here, when we've been at public events, representing this town, not only for this past year, but the last nine years on this board, and like Kevin said, you jumped right in for fifteen-plus years of this community, and I know it's going to continue, and I know you're going to stay close to us. Like I said earlier, I have your phone number. I have two of your phone numbers, so I'm good. I've asked you for some advice, not only prior to me running for selectman, but since I've been here, I've gone to you on many, many occasions, on the right thing to do, on different things, and I appreciate that, and I hope to keep seeing you around town. I know I will.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
I'm only leaving the board. I'm not leaving Wilmington.
We know that, so... You might wish I would.
Before I turn to you, not that I'm taking over your position, but, you know, there's always a better half.
That's true.
And that better half is out in the audience, too, and that's Doreen, and your family. And you couldn't do what you do without, without your family, and we want to thank them for, for giving us Mike over these past nine-plus years for everything that he's done. So, thank you, family.
Thank you, Kevin, for bringing that up, and I'll probably go back to it in a few moments, but as I look out there, I remember ten years ago, when I first started kicking this idea around, Doreen and I certainly talked about it, and she's like, "Yeah, if you think you can." And I was talking with Lou, and like, "You think so?" And, "Yeah, come on." So, we really kind of wrestled with it a little bit, because my kids were little, and I'm looking at my big kids now. Jackie's going off to college in a couple of months, and we're touring colleges for Michael now, and, you know, they were little kids. They're just getting involved in the youth soccer program and stuff, and I really wrestled with, you know, I want to be close to them, and coach them, and do all the things that dad wants to do with their kids, and I didn't want, I was concerned that this job would take me away from those responsibilities, and somehow, we were able to find a balance, I think, and I'm awfully glad. And frankly, I hope that in some way, my service to this community was an example to my children and other people, other young people, of one way that people can give back to a community. So, it's been, I think, a fruitful, beneficial experience for all of us, certainly for me, but I think that they benefited from it, too. And I'm grateful to them for sharing them, sharing me with the Town of Wilmington, but I don't, I'm sorry. Thank you for going there. I appreciate that.
Should we move on? Oh, Mr. Bendel.
I'm good, thanks.
No, thank you. Certainly want to acknowledge the special guests that are in the room, starting with your beautiful bride of just twenty-one years this past week, and certainly your kids, who I know are just fantastic young people, and obviously, we have several of your colleagues that are here tonight. I want to also, we all know that Lou is here, and appreciate him being here, and also, my former colleague, and my good friend Judy O'Connell, who we served with, and she was so gracious. We did this about a year ago, and how bittersweet it was to wish her a goodbye, but it hasn't really been goodbye. Anybody who knows Judy, she's been actively involved in the community, and I would expect the same for you. So, just before I go on, I just want to, if it's okay with you guys, I just want to yield maybe a few minutes of my time, and perhaps, if one of the past colleagues, and we heard from Lou, I'm not sure if Ms. O'Connell would like to offer any comments.
Thank you, Judy O'Connell. Wanted to take a moment to come here. I certainly don't want to take away from all the words that other people want to say in the celebration, but I wouldn't be anywhere else other than here tonight to celebrate your legacy here with the Town of Wilmington, and for the years of service that you've contributed to the Town of Wilmington. When I think of you, I think of a lot of things. I think about the work ethic that you have. I have tremendous amount of respect for all the people that have served on this board, but I, when I think of you, I think of someone who is just probably the most tireless worker that I can think of, and someone that has the biggest heart. The sincerity that you bring to this seat goes far beyond politics. It goes far beyond just professionalism. You bring an extreme human element to public service, and you can tell that it's been a labor of love for you, and that you've truly always wanted to do the right thing. People with integrity and character, and have the ability to lead, they lead by example. They don't have to say a lot, they just do it, and you are somebody that's done that, and you've definitely had some triumphs and tribulations in whatever seat you've sat on up there. You've been on opposing side, sides of issues with your colleagues, and you've managed to do that with professionalism and with the proper decorum. That is a gift. And you're very articulate, certainly very intelligent, and you are a friend to all, and you truly have been a gift to the Town of Wilmington, and we are so lucky to have had you for the time that we've had, and I know that you're not going anywhere. And some of the things that I admire about you, aside from your professional skills, is there are very few men that I see in my life that have a deeper sense of family than you do. You're so proud to be a son to your parents, to be a family member of the Shampoo family, and I think you're most proud to be a husband and to be a dad. And I think those are the things that, aside from all the accomplishments that you've done with this board, I think you could be equally as proud as to what's going on at home, and I know you're very sincerely grateful and appreciative of your wife and all the support that she's given you throughout the years. So, honored to be here tonight, honored to have worked with you for the time that I did, and I'm truly honored to call you my friend, and I just wanted to say congratulations and best wishes.
Wow, Judy, that's incredibly, I'm humbled by those words, and truly moved by them, and, you know, the words themselves mean a lot, but coming from you, they mean all the much more. I hold you in such high, high regard as a public servant here, and as a friend, and as a mentor. I learned from you when we, when we served together. So, you being here tonight means the world to me, and you're right on one, on all things, but one thing specifically, my most, the thing that I'm most proud of, my biggest accomplishment in life are the three people sitting right in front of me. They are my family. I'm the luckiest man alive because of them, so I appreciate, again, you bringing that to the forefront as well. Mr. Bendel, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, if I could yield a few more minutes of my time, if you could just state your name, please, sir?
Yeah, I've said all, and of course, Judy articulates so much better than I, and a lot of people, but thank you, Judy. But, but it's true, and people have to understand that you're volunteers, and you volunteer, you go out there, and you passionately do your job, and it's all for the good of the town. People agree to disagree, but for whatever I can, I know that every decision you have ever made has been for the good of the town. And again, some of the things that are said in public, and you put yourself out there for that, too, but you always handle it with class, and one word does come to mind, and I'm going to steal this from our brother Knight, humility. You have a lot of humility, and congratulations on your nine years.
Thanks, man.
See you next week at the meeting.
Yeah, I'll be at the meeting, yep.
Are you done?
No, I'm not.
Although I did yield some of my time. I do have some of my own comments, if I may, and a lot of it certainly has been said, but it bears repeating. I, too, have known Mike for the majority of the time you've been here. Your family moved into town, one street over from where Mike, well, I grew up, and so certainly, and then we became friendly through our volunteerism with the Knights of Columbus, and so on and so forth, but serving on the board for the last two years certainly have learned a lot, not only from you, but from Ms. O'Connell and other members, but specifically, my relationship with you that I'm most proud of is that you and I have not always agreed on every issue, but man, have you been respectful about it, you know, and sometimes, when you take a different side of a position, it gives me pause to think that maybe I ought to give it a little more thought, or that this guy has a pretty good reason, because as Mr. Smaglia said, every time Mike Shampoo's made a decision, he's always made it with the best interest of this community. And so, I appreciate your honesty, the way you've been respectful to the people up on this table, in the audience and in the community, and I know just how hard you've worked. I mean, I've seen you out there, and you've given a lot of your time, and your family, you've given a lot of yourself to be out there four, five, six nights a week, serving a community, doing what you love, and for that, I'm grateful, and to your community, and to your family, the time that you've been away from them, we really appreciate it. So, now it's time for you to spend a little more time with them, and if anybody knows anything about Mike Shampoo, he's the type of guy who's got his priorities in order, and there's no question about that. He's got his three priorities, his family, which we obviously can see, his faith, he's a man of strong faith, and his community. And I think tonight is obviously a culmination of the three things that he loves the most, and I hope he knows that not only he can see how proud his family is of him, and that obviously, you'll always have your strong faith, but I want you to know, this community is always going to have your back, because we really appreciate everything you've done for us, not just for nine years, but the years prior, the days in between, and what you'll do in the future. So, I really appreciate you, Mike. Obviously, you don't have to put up with me calling you every day now.
I'm going to be calling you for updates.
But I appreciate, and I'll just close with this. I'm not only grateful for what you've done, I'm grateful for the way you did it. You've always done things the right way. So, I'm sorry that Mr. McCoy couldn't be here, so it'll take it upon myself here to present to you with this plaque on behalf of my colleagues, and Mr. McCoy, and Mr. Hulk, Beverly D., and everyone here in the town with this plaque. Thought I could invite you up front.
Gentlemen, welcome to my house, yep. Do I get to take this with me?
Yes.
We're recycling that, actually. Your son.
Yeah.
Okay. Jeff, please. It gives me great pleasure to award this plaque in recognition of all your service to the town. It reads, "Michael L. Shampoo, in grateful recognition for your devoted service to the Town of Wilmington as a member and past chair of the Board of Selectmen from 2009 through 2018." Well deserved. Thank you. I don't think Chief Ford would say something.
And if I could, we could recognize the chief.
You lose time.
Mr. Shampoo, Chairman, I just want to say with the greatest amount of respect, I was one of the first people that knew you would be a smash hit in the Town of Wilmington. I did your residency background check. Squeaky clean, as they say, a true gentleman. I have never had a conversation with Mike Shampoo that I didn't walk away feeling comfortable, happy, or pleased with his thought process and when he's brought to the table. So, I have to say, from my part, from the Wilmington Police Department's part, you've always been supportive of us, and from the department heads as well, I've never heard an ill word about you, and truly, it speaks from the heart when these folks say, the accolades they say of you, that it's truly, truly meant. Thank you very much for your service. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. It's been an honor to work with you. Thank you very much. And Mr. Chair, perhaps I could pass it to the manager?
Absolutely, yeah. I certainly want to have an opportunity to offer comments. Mike and I have worked together now for the last year with Mike as a chair, and certainly beyond that, and he's always been a true gentleman, incredible amount of patience. It seems like more often than not, there's calls that I'm making to clue him in on the latest issue, and at various times of the day, and sometimes early evening. One, you know, a couple of things that really have impressed me is his fair-mindedness, even keel, really is very thoughtful when it comes to any decision that have to be made with the town, that impact the town, and the other thing I have to really note is his desire to really understand the workings of local government. To some measure, you know, I might consider him a bit of a local government geek. I mean, he just really takes a lot of interest and pride in finding out about all the, you know, the workings, as was mentioned earlier, attending many of the mass municipal meetings, selectmen's breakfasts, the legislative breakfasts. There's a series of other breakfasts, but, no, I mean, in all seriousness, he has been a great individual to work with, and I truly respect you and appreciate the opportunity to have worked with you.
Thank you, sir. It's been a tumultuous year, but a positive one, all being said. So, if we can dispense with all the pleasantries, no, I'm sincerely grateful and humbled by all these comments, and we've gone on long, but I just, I want to acknowledge a few, a few things here. I acknowledge my family first, and that is first in my mind, so I won't go through that again, but thank you for being here tonight. It's a surprise, by the way. I didn't know they were coming. I walked out of the door, and I saw my kids, but my wife wasn't here. I'm thinking, "What the..." Running a little late, apparently. I know. I'm flattered. Yeah, my wife works at the church. You know, some chief, and Judy, and Lou, I've worked with some tremendous people through the years, you know, and I made a note of some of the folks that I've had the great fortune, the great honor to work with. Your predecessor, Mike Kira, the town manager. knowledge and resources. And I was the beneficiary of being able to work close to him for a few years and learn from him, and I'm deeply thankful to him for sharing his knowledge, or as much of the knowledge that I was able to absorb. And certainly that goes for you as well, for the last, I guess, six years or so that we've had the opportunity to work together, twice while I was chairman. And as anyone, well, you guys will find out soon enough. Judy, you know, Lou, you know, the chairman works very, very closely with the town manager and town management, really on a daily basis, just with regards to communications and ongoing issues. And Jeff has been tirelessly available to me through the years, through this year especially, and through some challenging times. And so I'm grateful to you, sir, for your patience in dealing with some of my geeky questions, but I do have a passion for knowing. You know, in fact, Jeff asked me tonight, what are you gonna do with your Mondays now? And I said, I'm probably gonna just be watching you on TV, that's how much of a dork I am about this stuff. But I also wanna acknowledge that I had the great fortune of working with Mike Newhouse and learning from him, another tremendous asset in this community, and continues to be, in spite of the fact that he's not at this board anymore. Mike is a tremendous resource and has great knowledge and is passionate about the betterment of this community going forward. Ms. O'Connell, that goes for you as well, and Mr. Semaglia. I started on this board, sitting next to Mr. Lepore, and developed an affinity and a friendship with him, and a high regard for him as well. Certainly, that goes for Mr. McCoy as well, and I'm sorry that he's not here. We played phone tag a little bit today, but I wanted to convey my regards to him and my thanks to him for the years of collaboration. Sometimes, as it was said a little while ago, folks find themselves on opposite sides of issues, but largely, Mr. McCoy and I, in spite of the fact that we've often found ourselves exactly that, with differing opinions, we've been able to maintain decorum and, I guess, a positive relationship going forward. And to my right, Mr. Kyra, and Mr. Bendel, you've become friends to me, and I really admire you so much, so very much, for your volunteerism, and that goes for you as well. You guys are taking on the volunteer mantra here, your giving of your time and of yourselves and of your talents for the betterment of our community, and I hope that the population of Wilmington will respect and acknowledge the gift that they have in you and the time that you dedicate to the town. And I just pledged to you, one thing I wrote last minute here is I wanna pay tribute to my friends behind the curtain back there, WCTV, for the tireless efforts that you do for every, all of these meetings, not just Board of Selectmen, but for all these town government meetings. I made a list of some of the crowning achievements that the town had over the course of my tenure here, I'm not gonna go through it. It's been a heck of a ride, some things didn't go as planned, and a lot of things have. And I'm proud, as I drive around town and look at some of the signs and some of the fields and some of the buildings that I sat at this board, and together with my colleagues and with town management, we made some really remarkable things occur. And so, you know, I wanna say thank you to the chief for coming this evening, sir. Thank you for your kind words. Thank you to Beverly for all your years of tireless effort on behalf of this board, and Jeff, and, you know, and everyone in your office, please extend those comments as well. So at that note, thank you all very much. As I said a moment ago, I'm leaving the Board of Selectmen, I'm not leaving Wilmington, so you're gonna see me around quite a bit, and like Lou said, I have a meeting already scheduled next week to talk about the moving wall, and I'm gonna be taking on a post, working with WCTV on their board of directors, and I'm still involved in the Chamber of Commerce and a myriad of other things. So, I'm passionate about this wonderful, incredible community and the awesome people that live here, and I'm looking forward to working with you in other ways. So, thank you for all of that, and Godspeed, let's keep on going. But there's more work to do, so Jeff, if you don't mind, communications.
Yes, communications sent a letter out to Michael Bell, who's the executive director of the Woodbrier Health Center. This is with regard to an incident that took place back in March during that series of snow events that we had, and I just wanted to extend my thanks to Mr. Bell, who, as I noted, is the executive director. There was a gentleman who was at the senior center as a consequence of one of those storms, was not able to return home that evening because of the impact on his home. Terry Marciallo had made multiple calls to various hotels and motels in the area trying to provide an overnight forum. A lot of folks were experiencing the same thing, and she was not able to find housing for him or temporary housing for him that evening, and she did talk to Mr. Bell. He was gracious right out of the gate in providing a private room for this resident, a hot meal, provided breakfast the next morning, and so impressed this gentleman that he said I might consider staying here. But that really speaks to the operation they have there.
Outstanding. You know, just real briefly, I wanted to pause at that moment. You know, when that snowstorm was happening, I don't remember how much, this is the 32 inches of snow or whatever it was, it was a hell of a storm. I just wanna, I think it bears remarking that Mr. Bendel was reaching out to me early in the day and expressing a desire to make sure that folks that potentially would need our help would have access to our help. And while, Greg, you know, I know that other people specifically got involved and made this kind of stuff happen, I thought it was worthwhile, and I hope I don't embarrass you by saying that, but I was moved by and inspired by your, just your effort to try to get people engaged and working on some solutions. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
I take back all the nice things I said about you then, because that was a group effort, certainly that day. Everybody was helping out.
Indeed, indeed. Thank you.
Next is correspondence from the chair's famous or most passionate group, the Mass Municipal Association. They are having another meeting on May 16th, which is Wednesday at 11:00 a.m. This is a selectmen's meeting to provide information with regard to the marijuana law. There's a spokesperson from the Cannabis Control Commission that will be offering remarks, as well as Margaret Hurley from the municipal unit of the Attorney General's Office. If anyone is, a member of the board is interested in participating, you can see Beverly. Next is correspondence from Fios, indicating that there is a particular channel, the Azteca programming on Channel 20 is being removed from the Fios offering, and that has been communicated to subscribers. Correspondence, again, from Fios, indicating that they are providing a summary of their financial statement, their balance sheet, as well as documentation associated with their ownership, the so-called Form 400. We have correspondence from Catherine Maloney, who is the senior manager at Xfinity, and she is providing information about the apparently new design of their bill, and describes it in this correspondence.
Which, I don't know if that's good or bad, it took me 20 years to figure out how to read the last one, so I'm gonna have to start all over again.
Also, from Catherine Maloney from Xfinity is a description, a summary of the video packaging they have, and there's a series of different bundled packages ranging in price from $102.67 up to about $202.67, so that information has been provided to subscribers. Next is an email that came to me from Daniel Veerman, just reads, "It has come to my attention that my appointment to the Wilmington Board of Appeals expires this spring. Kindly communicate to the Board of Selectmen my desire to be reappointed for another term on the board if they so choose." We have correspondence from Paul Bruce Jr. with respect to the constable position, and he writes, "Could you kindly renew my constable appointment for the town of Wilmington for the upcoming 2018-2019 year? I thank you in advance for your time and consideration." Similar correspondence from Ronald D. Giorgio with regard to the constable services. "Dear Board of Selectmen, please reappoint me as constable for Wilmington. I have been a constable in Wilmington since 1992 and would appreciate your approval of this reappointment. I retired as a superior court officer for the Middlesex Superior Court after 28 years. I'm also a Vietnam veteran, serving in the United States Air Force from May 1, 1961 until April 30, 1967, and was honorably discharged April 30, 1967. I still live at 11 Marriott Road, Burlington, NE for 45 years. I will abide by your request to not solicit clients in Wilmington, but have authority to serve civil process for my clients. I am still a constable for Woburn, Medford, and Cambridge, as well as Wilmington. Have an active bond for each city and town. My bond is good until August of 2019 for Wilmington, at which time I will be renewed and will send to the clerk's office to be filed. I have also completed a training program on conflict of interest. Thank you for your consideration on this reappointment." We have correspondence, this was a letter that I had directed to Erica Johnson, who is part of the Democratic Town Committee, just noting that in accordance with the general laws, the committee needed to bring forward individuals there seeking to have the board appoint to the Board of Registries. Also, there's correspondence from Alice Hooper, reads as follows, "This letter is to serve as my intent to continue serving on the Board of Registries for the town of Wilmington. I appreciate your consideration for the reappointment, and I'm looking forward to continuing my many years of service in the town of Wilmington as a member of the Board of Registries. I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you for your consideration on this matter." We have correspondence from Erica Johnson, again, from the Democratic Town Committee. "On behalf of the Wilmington Democratic Town Committee, we would like to nominate the following members to be appointed to the Board of Registries, Mary Osgood and Roberta Lasky."
We have moved past communications to board to consider items, and the first one is with Mr. Michael Murphy to fly a Donate Life flag at Town Hall. Jeff, do you wanna highlight this for us, or should we introduce Mr. Murphy, or?
Yeah, I would say we can introduce.
Okay. Mr. Murphy, I think that's, is that you, sir?
Yes, I am.
I'll give you the floor for a few moments to make your presentation, sir, and then we'll take it up.
I'll be as brief as possible.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Murphy. I'm a 33-year president of the town of Wilmington, and I'm also a retired member of the, as a firefighter, fire officer, and fire chief. 15 years in Stonem, 13 years as chief in Wayland. And here in town, I served for five years as a code hearing officer. I'd just like to say that back in 1975, I donated a kidney to my sister, who at that time was in kidney failure due to contracting the virus that got into her kidney. I lived for some 40 years, lived a normal life on a single kidney without any problems. But after I retired from the fire service, I went to work for 10 years with FEMA as a disaster response worker. During my time, I went to fight a bombardment with FEMA. I also contracted a virus that got into my kidney and caused me to have a slow deterioration of my kidney. And I received a donation two years ago, a life-saving donation. So I'm here as a volunteer, I knew I'd get to it sooner or later, but I'm here as a volunteer for New England Donor Services, and the donor services act sort of like a clearinghouse for the kidneys for the various hospitals. They also encourage people to sign up when they renew their licenses to volunteer to be donors. This, of course, wouldn't mean living donor, be deceased, but we also deal with living donors, too. Being a living donor myself and reception of a deceased donor's kidney. April, as well as being autism awareness month, is also Donate Life Month. And what I'd like to do is, we have a flag from the New England Donor Services, and there's many communities throughout the Commonwealth that are flying it in the month of April. April is all being Donate Life Month. We're trying to encourage all the cities and towns to fly the flag, could be flown below the U.S. flag, for example. And it's there to bring awareness to kidney donation and try to encourage people that when they renew their license, and it has to be done every time you renew your license, to have on that license that you are a donor, in case anything occurs where you are able to donate an organ or something else to that person with a need that may save their life someday. Right now, there are 8,000 people that die on list waiting for organ donations. That's 20 a day. It's an awful rate, because there just aren't enough organs available. I was fortunate, I had a very wonderful family, that when their son passed away, unfortunately, they allowed the hospitals to donate his organs to those people that needed them. So we saved my life, and I'll be forever thankful for that. But I would appreciate it very much if you would give your permission for us to fly this flag on the flagpole outside the Town Hall and to bring attention to the need for organ donations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Unfortunately, there's only a week left in April, so...
Yes, you could fly it for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, sneak one, sneak a couple of days in there for you. I wanna open it up, if you don't mind hanging for just a moment, certainly the opportunity for members here to offer any questions or comments to Mr. Murphy. It is Mr. Murphy, yes? Yeah, so, if someone has one.
Sure.
Go ahead.
I wanna thank you, Mr. Murphy, for bringing this to our attention. Certainly, this is new to me, and so I'm glad that you brought this to our attention, and certainly I'm inspired by your story and glad that you're doing well, and certainly happy to support this.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Bendel's comments, and thank you for your service to the communities that you serve as a firefighter and fire chief, and thank you for the service that you're doing here for Donate Life. And we have a pin, I'll proudly wear this pin and a brochure, thank you for providing us with that information, and I'm certainly supportive of this.
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. I am an organ donor, and how important it is, but I would like to stress that when you do renew your license, try to become an organ donor, and thank you for bringing this to our attention, I fully plan on supporting it.
Mr. Murphy, thank you. I'm delighted that you came to us a little bit late this year, so I sense, I'm a gambling man, but I think you're gonna get a good vote here, but I would suggest to you, perhaps next year, you know, in early March, at one of the early meetings in March, maybe submit a letter, if you're gonna leave that flag with us, we'll hang on to it, or we can figure out a plan to either get it back into your hands. Come to us early, and we'll display it for the entire month of April next year.
I appreciate it.
And perhaps give you an opportunity to sort of give your message again, which is healthy.
Unfortunately, I only just started volunteering for donor services, so it was the last second thing to...
We do as much as we can, right? Very well. Well, thank you again. I guess if there's nothing further, we'd accept a motion to approve the request.
I'll move to grant the request.
Second.
Made in second, any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? That's four, and one absent. Sir, thank you again for bringing it. Do you want to provide that flag to Jeff now, or Beverly now, and we'll take it up tomorrow and make sure it gets displayed?
And I also have some extra pamphlets that you could either leave out front or pass around, whatever needs to be done. And whenever we start flying a flag, I could put the... And whenever we start flying a flag, I could put together a little ceremony while we fly the flag for the first time.
Okay. I will ask you to communicate directly with Mr. Hall tomorrow, perhaps, just to make sure, you know, you guys get connected on what arrangements you want to make with regards to that.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Mr. Murphy. We appreciate you being here. Next on our Board to Consider Items are, is the request of the Wilmington-Tuxbury Chamber of Commerce to reschedule the race which was previously approved for Sunday, September 16th over to Sunday, September 23rd. In this, we had some forewarning that that might be necessary. Jeff, is there any concerns about overlaps or anything else with regards to that date?
No.
So unless there's any questions or comments, I'd accept a motion to approve Sunday, September 23rd instead of the original date.
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded by Greg. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Four and one absent. Thank you. The request of Christina Stewart, the, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I'm following the agenda here. Request of Christina Stewart, Library Director, to request the use of the Swain Green on Thursday, August 9th, 2018, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. for the annual Summer Bash on Fridays, August 3rd, August 10th, August 17th, and August 24th, 2018, from 7:45 to 10:00 p.m. to conduct movie nights. Does that summarize the entire request or did you have more you wanted to highlight on this, Jeff?
She notes in her memo to me, the annual Summer Bash, this will be the third annual, Thursday, the 9th, from 5, August 9th, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. They've invited, to be located at the Swain Green. People can purchase dinner from Amigos Locos Tex Mex or Amigos Locos Cantina. And also notes that music will be provided by Vanessa Terrain and the Jumping Monkeys. Children's games and entertainment will be part of the evening festivities.
That sounds like a lot of fun. I would accept a motion to approve Christina Stewart's request.
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Four and one absent. Thank you. We have a request to approve the renewal of secondhand dealer's license for Robert P. Flaherty Jewelers, Incorporated. Do we have recommendations or anything on this, Jeff?
We do. We have a recommendation from the Police Chief, Michael Begonis. Upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of Robert P. Flaherty's Jewelers, Inc., application for a secondhand dealer's license, 248 Main Street.
Thank you. Unless there's anything else, I would accept a motion to approve Mr. Flaherty's license.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Ed, seconded by Kevin. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Four and one absent. We're going to send that around here for signatures. Board to consider the approval of renewal of secondhand dealer license for GameStop. We saw them recently on this, and their license expires. And so this is really a renewal of a recently granted license. Do we have recommendations on this, Jeff?
Yes, similarly, the Police Chief recommends approval.
Once again, I would accept a motion to approve this license request if someone has moved to do so.
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
All in favor.
Four and one absent. The Board to Consider the issuing of a Sunday Entertainment License to Cushing Amusements in conjunction with the Fourth of July Celebration. Jeff, you want to highlight the reason for it and any recommendations?
This is as part of the July 4th festivities that will be taking place. Again, as in the past, the, there are restrictions in terms of the number of rides that will be permitted. And I believe it's limited to 14 rides, and there's 10 games that will be all contained on the Swain, the Swain parking lot area. And we have recommendations from the Police Chief, Mike Begonis. Upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of the Cushing Amusement Application for Sunday Entertainment License.
Why is there only a Sunday and not the rest of the week? We don't allow entertainment on Sundays?
I believe it's, yeah, in terms of the general laws, there's a limitation in terms of what can go on on Sundays, whereas the rest of the days of the week is allowed.
Thank you for answering that.
They still don't need approval for?
Yeah, is there a permit for the other days?
I think they would need permit for the other days.
Well, so they received approval through the Board of Appeals for the, you know, having the carnival, that was granted previously. This is just to allow them to conduct operations on Sundays.
So this is really just for the Sunday license?
Yes.
Very well. With that recommendation from the chief, is there a motion to approve the Sunday license to Cushing Amusements?
So moved.
Second.
I'll take it.
I'll take it from Ed and seconded from Kevin. All in favor? Four and one absent. I think that's going to go around too.
You decide that one.
Just me?
So just you, you're in trouble.
Yeah, I know. Just me, huh?
When is your last official day of business? Today?
No, I'm still chairman up through Saturday at 8:00 or 7:59 and 59 seconds, I think, so.
Good, because I got to call you tomorrow and a couple of things.
Thanks.
Text me when you're done calling, I'll call right after.
This is going to be great. Next on the agenda, Board to Consider Appointing William F. Kavanaugh as the Records Access Officer for the Wilmington Fire Department. Jeff, do you want to review that for us?
Yes, under the modifications more recently to the open, to the public records law, cities and towns are required to establish records access officers. These individuals essentially are the ones that coordinate and ensure that a response is provided in a timely manner to records, public records requests. We have Sharon George as the Town Clerk is the records access officer for most of the departments with the exception of police and fire. And so in this case, the prior records access officer was retired fire chief Rick McCullen. You know, we've certainly been continuing to respond to record requests, but this is something we just need to do as somewhat of a housekeeping issue.
Great, very well.
Is he aware of this request?
He will be. No, he is.
So unless there's, well, I guess I would accept a motion to appoint William Kavanaugh as Records Access Officer for the Wilmington Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion on that? Seeing none? All in favor? Four and one absent. And so we have the, some appointments and reappointments to the Animal Control Officer, Board of Appeals, Board of Registarians, Council for the Arts, Fence Viewer, and Constables. Jeff, do you want to walk us through the steps here if I could ask you to?
Just a quick question on these appointments. Do we usually wait until after town meeting for these appointments? I thought in the past that...
You know, in the past, there has been, the appointments have been made after the town meeting. One of the things, though, that we've found is that the appointments are really through April 30th, and there are some instances, depending upon when the town meeting falls, where the appointment is actually expired before they come up. And in this particular case, for example, the Planning Board, I know, has a meeting on May 1st, and they need a full slate of individuals for that meeting. So the intent was to move it back a meeting so that the appointments are made before the end of April.
It's the same on the Board of Appeals.
I think it also avoids that, I don't think we'll run into that here, but it avoids that potential issue where someone doesn't get reappointed and they go to a meeting thinking they're on the board and they're not anymore. You know what I mean? I don't think that's going to happen here, but I think, you know, that could be an awkward circumstance if that were to happen. So this, I think, resolves the potential for that.
Okay, so these, the first slate of candidates here are appointments or reappointments that the Board of Selectmen would need to make. I would suggest taking them up individually. The first being the Animal Control Officer for a term of one year. Christopher Sullivan, who, as you know, is currently the Animal Control Officer, and if reappointed, would serve through 2019.
I'll make a motion that we...
So we have a motion made to approve Christopher Sullivan as the Animal Control Officer and seconded by Mr. Bendel. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Four. Very good.
Next is an appointment to a five-year term on the Board of Appeals to expire 2023. Daniel Veerman, as I noted earlier, has expressed interest in reappointment.
I'll make a motion that we grant Mr. Veerman a five-year term.
I'll second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Four and one absent. Thank you.
Next is an appointment to the Board of Registarians. This is a three-year term to expire 2021. Again, as noted, Mrs. Hooper has expressed interest in continuing to serve in that capacity. The Democratic Town Committee has actually recommended two different individuals for the Board's consideration, Mary Osgood and Roberta Lasky.
How many seats are there?
Just one.
Which of the two would the Democratic Town Committee recommend? Mary or Roberta? Do we know? I know that the chair is in the audience, maybe she can...
Please do, yeah, we'd like some clarity, please.
Hi, I'm Erica. I'm the Chair of the Wilmington Democratic Town Committee. We're recommending Roberta and Mary, frankly, because they're active members. We haven't seen Alice at one of our meetings in over three years. I think it's important, especially if we have someone that's representing our committee on the Board of Registarians, to be able to come and report back to us and be an accurate representation of our committee. Both Mary and Roberta are both dedicated members. They're both retired and have plenty of time to dedicate to the Board of Registarians.
Thank you. The question I have is, is it one position? You're asking for two and, you know, I guess...
It is one. It is one position.
So you're asking for two, and I think we can only give you one. Is that right?
So we just, they both shared interests.
Do you have a preference?
Just based on travel schedule, I would say Mary Osgood. Roberta seems to travel best.
Thank you for that. Appreciate you being here tonight. So it's the pleasure of the Board as to what direction to go here.
I'd like to nominate a fellow teacher in Mary Osgood. I'll second that motion.
I've got a made motion and a second. Is there a discussion on that? I see none. All in favor? That's four. Thank you. Thank you for the discussion. Thank you for being here this evening and adding some clarity to this. May I ask, is it, can, is it your office or would someone, someone send a letter of appreciation to Ms. Hooper in spite of maybe some of her inavailability? She has indeed served in this capacity for a number of years, and I think it certainly behooves us to reflect on that. So thank you for that.
Next, under appointments, Council of the Arts, or Council for the Arts, two-year terms to expire 2020, Louise Anderson, Ruth Camber, and Jane Crane.
Is there a motion to approve the Council for the Arts appointees? Motion's made?
Second.
And seconded. All in favor? You have four-ish unanimous. You know what I mean?
Next, we have the Fence Viewer position, one of the higher-paid positions in town.
It's going to be the most exciting job, too.
One-year term to expire June 30, 2019. Paul Looney, who, as you know, is our Town Engineer, and John Spalding, the Building Inspector.
I'd accept a motion to approve these two gentlemen as Fence Viewers.
So moved.
Made?
Second.
And seconded. All in favor? Four and one.
If you had asked for discussion, I would have suggested maybe you.
I got time on my hands, yeah, I know. I'll watch the paint dry, too. Thank you. Constables, Jeff?
Yes, Constables. We have Barbara Cola, Jason Costa, Eric Randall, John Bridges, Jr., Paul Bruce, Jr., Ronald DiGiorgio, Dennis Otis, William Pepacelli. We do have a note from John Rowan. He telephoned to indicate that he is no longer, he's not seeking reappointment. And then Anthony Seiya. Also, Christopher Sullivan, only in conjunction with his duties as Animal Control Officer. And I would note that those individuals with asterisks, namely John Bridges, Paul Bruce, Jr., Ronald DiGiorgio, William Pepacelli, and Anthony Seiya, they have restrictions so they're not to solicit clients, have authority to serve process in Wilmington.
And Dennis Otis. You passed over it.
Yes, okay, yes, Dennis Otis.
Very well. So I would, do we have recommendations on those by any chance or does that standard operating procedure?
We do have recommendations, again, from the Police Chief. Upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends renewal of the following constables who may request a reappointment, and each of these candidates is recommended.
So I would accept a motion to approve the constables as read by Mr. Hall and with the omission of John Rowan by virtue of him indicating no longer interested in pursuing this.
So moved.
Made?
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Loud. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Four and one.
The next slate of positions are appointments that I'm recommending subject to ratification by the Board. As you'll note here, the Commission on Disabilities, we continue to have some vacancies. One vacancy for a term of, to expire 2019. Another vacancy for a term to expire 2020. This vacancy, each of these vacancies has a particular requirement for the candidate to serve. In the case of this second vacancy, it would be an elected official or an appointed official in town. Again, another, for another term to expire 2021, we have a vacancy would need to be an individual with a handicap or a family member of an individual with a handicap. We will post these, as we've done in the past, on the Town's website, but we currently have three members to the Disabilities Commission. We're looking to fill those. With regard to the Historical Commission, we have two individuals that I've appointed subject to the Board's approval, three-year terms, Kathleen Delaney and Diane Harvey. Kathleen would be a new member on this. I'm sorry, she's actually serving on this committee. Both of them are currently.
So this is a, we need approval of your, ratification of your appointment for the Historical Commission of Kathleen Delaney and Diane Harvey?
Yes.
I would accept a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Made?
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Four and one absent.
The next two positions are for reappointment to the Permanent Building Committee, Diane Allen and Paul Melrani. Both, as you know, are current members. This term would bring them through 2021. Again, I have appointed them subject to the Board's ratification.
I'd accept a motion to appoint Diane Allen and Paul... I'd accept a motion to appoint Diane Allen and Paul Melrani, based on the town manager's appointing.
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. All in favor? Four and one. Thank you. I just want to take a brief moment just to restate what Jeff just said. The Commission on Disabilities, if there's folks in the community that would like to participate in some way in local government, this is an opportunity to get involved. I would ask you to seek or reach out to the town manager's office and just learn more about it. Perhaps it fits you, and we'd love to have more folks involved. So there's an opportunity right there. Thank you.
Next are the slate of appointments that I have made. So just noting, the animal inspector position is a one-year position through 2019. Christopher Sullivan, who, as you know, is the animal control officer. Building inspector, one-year term. John Spalding as the alternate inspector. Michael Desmond. The Cartel Lecture Fund Committee is three-year terms to expire 2021. Ann Berghaus and Margaret St. Orange. Cemetery Commission is three-year term to expire 2021. I would note that this, Jack Cushing, would be new to this post. Conservation Commission is three-year term to expire 2021. Vincent Ricciardi and Laurie Finn, currently serving on the commission. Elderly Services Commission, three-year term to expire 2021. Mary Dionne and Charlotte DiMarco. Electrical Inspector, one-year term, 2019. Frederick Sutter and Arthur Kelly as the alternate. Gas Inspector, one-year term to expire 2019. Paul Raffey and John Mitek as the alternate. Board of Health, three-year term. Jane Anne Williams Vale is the appointment there, currently serving on the board. Library Trustees, three-year terms to expire 2021. Daniel Hall. Kathleen Delaney, she is actually, would be new to serving on the Board of Library Trustees. Planning Board, five-year term to expire 2023. Terrence Boland. Plumbing Inspector, one-year term to expire 2019. Paul Raffey, and the alternate is John Mitek. Public Weyer, one-year term to expire 2019. Paul Anderson and David Shagru. Reading Municipal Light Department Citizens Advisory Board, three-year term to expire 2021. George Hooper, second. Recreation Commission, three-year term to expire 2021. Sheila Burke and Laurie Robarge. Trustees of Trust Funds, three-year terms to expire 2021. Michael Morris, Penny Dudley, and Pamela McKenzie. Veterans Agent, one-year term to expire 2019. Louis Semaglia IV. Veterans Grave Officer, one-year term to expire 2019. Louis Semaglia IV. Water and Sewer Commission, Commissioner, three-year term to expire 2021. Robert Levita. Wiring Inspector, one-year term to expire 2019. Frederick Sutter and Arthur Kelly as the alternate.
Thank you. And once again, those are positions that the town manager has the authority to appoint, so there's no vote necessary by us on those. The next is the Board to Consider the Summer Meeting Schedule for July and August. So this is all you guys. I think you should throw a few extra ones in there. So Jeff has made some recommendations here for July 16th and August 13th, but I will really back off and let you guys make this decision, obviously.
It's fine with me. 16th, 13th.
Sounds good to me.
16th might not be good, but I'll make it happen. I'll just come home, I'm coming home a day early. I was going to Atlanta for the weekend.
I can stand in for you if you want.
No, it's, it's fine by me.
You're on vacation.
I was going out to Atlanta to visit my brother that weekend, but I was coming home Monday.
Up to the 9th?
I'll come home.
You can go up to the 9th if you want. That's the second, second Monday.
Does that change anything, Jeff, for you? Anyone on vacation?
I don't, I don't know, Beverly, you said?
I don't plan on vacation till you guys do.
Yeah, I, it's not a problem on our end, so I think we're...
July 9th would be more comfortable for me, but it's up to the boy.
It's fine with me.
It's fine with me.
So we don't need to vote, that's just a discussion.
July 9th and August 13th.
Yep.
Public comments. Anyone? Anyone? Going once? We've kind of wrestled that out already, I think, haven't we? Very well. Thank you. New business, items not reasonably anticipated by me, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. So I will go to my left.
This is the time that I get to shout out to a veteran in town, and when Mr. Semaglia gave me this name, I've known Paul Agostino for a long time. He's been dedicated to the veterans for helping the veterans in this town for many, many years, as long as I've been involved, if not longer, I'm sure longer, because he was in the Army. He's a longtime Wilmington resident, has helped many and many of veterans for years. And he's helped out at a lot of the veterans' events for Mr. Semaglia. So a shout out to him and his family for all his service to the Army, but the service of this community. So thank you, Mr. Agostino. It's an honor and privilege to shout out to you. I've known you for a long time. He's a great, great, great human being. And I know this is going to come up on the dates to remember, but the Special Olympics is May 2nd, starts at 9:00 at the high school. It's a great event, and I hope to see a lot of people out there that day.
Thank you, Ed. Mr. Carr, anything?
I'm good, just, other than, again, it's going to come up on coming events, but the election is April 28th. So please make an effort to get out and vote. We have candidates out there that are working hard. They deserve your vote and participation. And also, May 5th town meeting, that's going to be an important town meeting, so hopefully everybody will, will get involved in that as well.
Thank you, sir. Ed, Greg?
Yeah, I just sort of also echo that. Hope everybody gets out and votes on Saturday, and again, thank you to the chair.
Thank you. Yeah, that, you guys did it, but it's worth saying again. This, this coming Saturday, the 28th, is Election Day, and, you know, there's always, not always, there's a lot of discussion in social media and in the public square about what's good and what's not good in our, in our town or in the region. And the purest form of government is going to the polls and filling in a dot. And if you don't go to the polls on Saturday and fill in a dot, then frankly, you know, I would, I would humbly request you not chime in on social media. I think you give up your right to chime in when you don't even have the time to go and vote. So please, folks, go out on Saturday and cast your vote. We have contested races, and as Kevin said so eloquently, these people are putting a lot of time, energy, and some money in to run these races, and, you know, you're showing them respect by going and voting. So we look forward to having a great turnout this Saturday. And town meeting, too. That's right. I'll be there in the audience, sitting with the rest of you, so come on down. Jeff, important dates, please.
Yes, starting on April 25th, we have a brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. April 25th, also is the Finance Committee Planning Board Public Hearing. This is with respect to the special town meeting. It is at 7:30 here at the town hall in the auditorium. April 26th, this date was actually, obviously, we put this on without, before the circumstances that took place on Saturday occurred. We were planned to have the analog TIF forum here at the town hall on the 26th in respect for the late Representative Vasselli. We are not going to have that on the 26th. We are looking to reschedule that to May 1st from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. Annual Town Meeting Elections, as was noted, April 28th, polls open 8:00 AM, close at 8:00 PM. April 28th, brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. April 28th, Drug Takeback, Public Safety Building, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And then we have April 30th through May 4th, curbside collection of yard waste, as was previously noted. May 2nd, Special Olympics, Wilmington High School, 9:00 AM. May 2nd, brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Again, on May 5th, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. May 5th, also is the annual town meeting, as was noted, high school, 10:30 start, also that is the time of the special town meeting. I would also just note, while it wasn't listed here, we, because we will not have a, another selectmen's meeting before this comes up, May 8th is a tentative date at this point, but we believe it's, it will occur. Meeting with EPA and the Work Group, which is the Citizens Environmental Group, as well as town officials, to review and discuss some recent documents that have been provided by Olin's consultant with respect to studies that are being done on the property there. This is really a working, so-called working meeting in that the intent is to get these various groups together to discuss the documents, at least at a preliminary level. The response date, I believe, is later in May. So the public is certainly invited to attend, although we will not be taking public comments. But again, that is tentatively scheduled for May 8th. As soon as we confirm it, we will post it on the town's website.
Where will that take place?
It will take place here in Room 9, right? Room 9.
Do you have a time?
5:30 is the scheduled time, tentatively.
May 11th?
Let's see, May 11th is the Good Guy Award Dinner, and May 14th is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting.
With that said, unless there's anything else, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Made?
Second.
And seconded. All in favor? Thank you, Wilmington, and good night.